Good evening, and I would like to reconvene the Putnam Valley Board of Education Business Meeting of June 17th, 2021. Can I please ask for all of us to stand and join me as we salute our flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And thank everybody for your patience. We had an executive session, so we're a couple of minutes late. First order of business, I'd like to resolve to approve the minutes of the work session board meeting of June 7th, 2021.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, I would like to announce that the treasurer's report, sorry, I'd like to put my glasses on, I'd like to announce that the treasurer's report for May 2021 is available in the business office. All right, and that brings us right to one of my favorite parts of board meetings, pride in Putnam Valley.
For those who don't know me, my name is Jeremy Loft, I'm superintendent of schools here. And our first Pride in PV is each year we have the privilege of having students sit in on our board as student representatives, and some are more vocal than others. And this year, we've really been blessed to have two students that have been actively engaged in board discussions, providing updates to the board, and it's really been a privilege to get to know them over the past year. So we just wanted to take a quick opportunity, this is obviously their last meeting, to recognize them and thank them for their efforts. So first, I'd like to recognize Parker Sparazza. You guys can make your speeches later when it's your turn, if you're up to it.
Jessica.
Yep.
I just want to echo what Jeremy said. We've had, I've been on the board 12 years, we've always had students, they always have a good role. These two kept us on our toes. They asked questions, they brought input, they brought us to tears sometimes, they brought some audience members to tears sometimes. So if they show this kind of passion and commitment and dedication to what some people view as something to put on a resume, they did not. They did much more than that. Their futures are bright. So we are going to miss you both terribly.
Thank you. So our next Pride in PV is going to go to someone who is sure to hate every second of this. But we do want to recognize Dr. Guy Cohen for more than 30 years of service as a board trustee and a past president to the Board of Education. For anybody who knows how this works, all the board members up here are volunteers, and to volunteer your time for over 30 years to see that the school district is moving in the right direction is a really impressive feat. So Dr. Cohen has decided not to seek reelection, and I'm sure he will spend more time with his family and out on the soccer field and with his students than at Columbia University. But I personally have known him for many, many years as a student, as a teacher, and now as a superintendent, and it's been a privilege to work alongside him for many years. Thank you.
We had wanted to, I had come up with the idea about three or four months ago, to come up with a photo book for Dr. Cohen, showing him all the things he's done over the years for 30 years, except he won't let us take his picture. So the only pictures we have are the mandatory board meetings, and there you see, if you need to know which one, top left is Mr. Cohen circa '85? And bottom is more recently. So we weren't able to do that. I am going to miss Mr. Cohen more than I can say. One thing I know I'm not going to miss is his presence at board meetings, he's going to be on this side of the table instead of that table. And I know we're still going to get, and I have pages and I'm not going to read them, but about once a week or once a month, I get Guy's Smile of the Day, and some of you may get that as well. So a couple of them. Teacher, why are you doing math on the floor? You told me not to use tables. Sometimes they're thought provoking. Why are goods sent by ship called cargo and those sent by truck shipment? Excellent question. England has no Kidney Bank, but it does have a Liverpool. So these are the kinds of things that I am going to deeply miss about Dr. Cohen, and I just want to make it a little more serious and read something that I think could have been written for him, and it's by Ralph Waldo Emerson. To laugh often and much, to win the respect of intelligent people and the affection of children, I'm going to underline the affection of children part, to earn the appreciation of honest critics and endure the betrayal of false friends, to appreciate beauty, to find the best in others, to leave the world a little bit better, whether by a healthy child, a garden patch, or a redeemed social condition, to know even one life has breathed easier because you have lived. This is to have succeeded. And Dr. Cohen, you have absolutely succeeded here in Putnam Valley.
So our rest, our next recognition is provided by the Westchester Putnam School Board Association. Honored to recognize Guy Cohen, whose support of public education, commitment to educational excellence, and dedication to leadership has enhanced the quality of education for all students of the Putnam Valley School District.
And I know that there is already, those of you who are familiar with our grounds, we have bricks out by the concession stand and by the flagpole for people from the Booster Club who have supported athletics, the Cohen family has one, but the Board of Education, we have personally purchased one for Dr. Cohen that says, "Guy Cohen, for your decades of service to Putnam Valley and generations of students and family, we thank you."
And now I would like to invite a special guest up to the mic, Regent Fran Wells.
So before I begin with my certificate of recognition that I want to present on behalf of the Board of Regents and the University of the State of New York Education Department, I just want to congratulate the school district for an incredible year. You have really exemplified the kind of service to the community, to students, to teachers that has made me very proud and proud to have been part of this school district during this, during this year that has been unforgettable. And in my role as regent, I've been able to see how the schools in New York have responded. This school district responded in a way that just gives me the feeling that we believe in children, all children need the opportunity to learn and to need that opportunity to connect with their teachers. And you did it. I congratulate the superintendent, the Board of Education, all of the teachers, all of the staff, the bus drivers, everyone here. This has been remarkable, truly remarkable, and I say that from the seat that I've had for this year and which I'm honored to have. So this certificate of recognition presented to Guy Cohen for dedicated service to the Putnam Valley community as a member of the Putnam Valley Board of Education for 32 years and for outstanding contributions to the well-being and academic achievement of children and youth. Guy has been a longtime, longtime member of the district audit committee, served as liaison to BOSI's, tutored countless students for the region's examination, acted as a benefactor to numerous student clubs and activities, notably the Stay Awake-a-thon for Make a Difference Club, supported many innovative and transformative initiatives in the Putnam Valley School District, including Full Day Kindergarten, later Start Time Science Research Program, and International Baccalaureate. Guy also participated regularly in the PTA Annual Holiday Read and presented comments in Spanish and French at the World Language National Honor Society. Yes, Guy is a Renaissance man, and he even sends incredible, incredibly funny puns and stories which we all enjoy. My husband is here tonight with me because he has come to really appreciate all of these messages that we receive from Guy. So this is New York State Honorary Life of Service Award, and I'm proud to know you and to have been part of this.
I do want to recognize Dr. Cohen's wife, Jerry, his children and grandchildren are here with him this evening. So one last round of applause, Dr. Cohen.
And as you're coming to your seat, Dr. Loft, I just thought of one thing I wanted to add. The very first time I sat at the table, I happened to sit down at that side, and the president at the time said, "Oh, no, 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 that's where Dr. Cohen seats, he must sit next to the students." So for Guy, it's always been about the students, the rest of us just take up space. It is always about the students.
Okay. So our next presentation this evening will be a presentation from KGND, our architects, that will present our five-year facilities plan.
I think Acume is up next.
That's not the, where are we going?
They can fight it out in the hallway.
How about whichever one you open first?
Whoever, whoever meets the podium first.
Theresa May, KGND Architects.
Good evening, everyone. So my name is Theresa May, I'm an architect and associate at KGND Architects, and I'm here to present a building condition survey and five-year plan that we conducted for Putnam Valley Central School District. So what is a building condition survey? All school buildings in New York State are required to be surveyed by a licensed architect or engineer every five years. So the district contacted KGND to lead a team to survey all of the school buildings and produce a building condition survey report, as well as fill in the forms that are sent to us by SED with categorizing all of the, all of the items that may need work or are in good condition. There we are. Sorry, we skipped a slide. So KGND led a team of architects and engineers, our architects from KGND Architector, as well as engineers from Burilly Gallagher Associates and Insight Engineering, and our roofing consultants at Watzke Associates, visited all of Putnam Valley's school buildings, which include three student-occupied school buildings, Putnam Valley Elementary School, Middle School, and High School, as well as two administrative buildings, the district office and the bus garage. Those five buildings comprise 290,000 gross square feet of space. That is a lot of building to maintain, as well as two campuses, and Putnam Valley Central School District does a very good job of maintaining them. If we had to approximate a replacement value for those, for those buildings, it would be $174 million. That's a lot of money to put into new buildings, so it's very important to maintain the buildings that we have. So we go through the buildings and we compile a list of all of the items that need repair or improvement, and we assign a budget estimate to those items, and we also assign priorities to those items, scale one through four. Priority one is a life safety issue that would need to be addressed basically immediately to remedy the, the safety issue. Priority two items are health and safety issues or property damage that's present. These are less critical but should be addressed within one or two years of the building condition survey. Priority three items are generally age-related. Putnam Valley Central School District's buildings range in age from 1935 to 2000. Over that time period, you're going to see systems and materials age out and need to be replaced. Priority four items are desirable upgrades. A good example of this is that at Putnam Valley Middle School, there's built-in millwork that's almost original to the building. The millwork is still good, the bookshelves are still working, but you may want to replace those in the next five years. The good thing that we found when we compiled all of the data from our surveys of all of the buildings at Putnam Valley Central School District is that there were zero priority one items. There were some priority two items that the district can seek to remedy in the next couple of years, and there were of course priority four items because there's always desirable upgrades. The priority three category had the bulk of the items, and again, those were age-related items like boiler replacements. But we're flagging these things before they become an issue. What we want to try and prevent is having priority three items become priority two items. We'd like to resolve them before they become a problem. So the building condition survey provides a tool for the district to anticipate capital improvements. So work that was completed since the last building condition survey in 2015 includes a district-wide energy performance contract that was executed, which entailed installing the geothermal system at Putnam Valley Elementary School, as well as replacing most of the windows at Putnam Valley Elementary School and the district-wide solar panel installations. There were also elevator improvements or repairs at Putnam Valley Middle School, fire alarm panel replacement and heat replacements at the high school, as well as the 2018 capital projects which were completed in 2020, which is the Health and Wellness Center addition to the high school, the social commons and learning commons addition and renovation at the middle school, as well as maker space and auditorium alterations at the elementary school. From those capital projects, there was actually some funds left over, and we're going to be completing a Phase Two capital project of toilet room alterations at the middle school this year. So let's take a look at what we found in each of the school buildings. Putnam Valley Elementary School was constructed in 1935. Major additions were constructed in 1955, 1962, and 2008. The building received a satisfactory rating in 2015, and the school district has maintained that rating in 2020. Some of the major identified items that should be addressed by the school district in the next five years are paving and replacement of the drain and drainage repairs, window replacements in the 1955 wing, replacement of mechanical equipment, electrical panel board replacement, and a fire alarm replacement. Note that all of those items are priority three. They should be addressed in the next three to four years, and the district has time to plan for these replacements and repairs. Sorry, it's not advancing to the next slide, hold on. Oh, it skipped two, hold on. One, two, there we are. So Putnam Valley Middle School was constructed in 1972, and we completed an addition renovation in 2020. In 2015, the building received a satisfactory rating, and the district has maintained that satisfactory rating. Some of the major identified needs are pavement replacement, the middle school parking lot is starting to show its age, replacement of the geothermal heat pumps and piping, that system is 20 years old, so you're going to start to see some of the equipment aging out, electrical panel board replacement, many of the panels are original to the building, as well as masonry maintenance. Again, note that all of those items are priority three. Putnam Valley High School was constructed in 2000. It is the newest building, but it is 21 years old. It received a satisfactory rating in 2015, and it received a satisfactory rating in 2020. Some of the major identified needs are paving and walkway replacements in the parking lot, as well as repair to the existing retaining wall, a roof replacement and masonry maintenance. And the roof replacement would be those areas of the original building that don't have solar panels currently on them. When the energy performance contract was executed, maintenance repairs were completed on the areas of the roof where the solar panels were placed, but the rest of the original roof of the high school does need replacement. Also included on this list are heat pumps and geothermal pumps associated with that 21-year-old geothermal system. The outdoor turf field is also up for replacement in the next five years. So the turf itself was installed seven years ago, that whole complex was completed seven years ago, and turf, like a carpet in your home, has kind of an expiration date. So the district is doing a good job of regularly maintaining it and having kind of annual cleanings, but that turf field will need to be looked at and assessed in the next five years. Putnam Valley Central School District also has two administrative buildings. The district office, which was built in 2007, received a satisfactory rating in 2020 for its building condition survey. We do have to survey all buildings that are occupied, whether they're students or staff, to make sure that they meet building code. There were some minor maintenance items on this building, priority four. I'm going to give the slide a moment to advance. The Putnam Valley Central School District bus garage was constructed in 2010, it received a satisfactory rating in 2015, and an overall building rating satisfactory in 2020. There are a couple of items that need to be addressed by the school district, there is a priority two of some corroded hot water distribution piping, we also suggest that there's a water treatment installed as well when that piping is replaced so that you don't have corrosion of the piping again, and then a couple of snow guards on the roof would be a good addition to that building. So minor maintenance and repairs at the bus garage. So we gathered an entire Excel spreadsheet which had hundreds of items on them, and from that we called some priority capital projects. What you see here doesn't entail everything on the list, but we feel that this is a good core of projects that the district should focus on. So that's district-wide site improvements at both campuses, roof replacement at the high school, heat pump replacement at the high school and the middle school, because that geothermal system is 20 years old, electrical panel board replacement at the middle school and the elementary school, some of those panel boards are original to the building, as well as window replacement in the 1955 wing of the elementary school, and a fire alarm replacement at the elementary school. So the budget estimate total for these anticipated priority capital projects is approximately $11 million. The next steps are to submit the building condition survey forms back to SED via their portal and deliver hard copies and digital copies to the district for your use and records. That concludes our presentation. Does the board have any questions?
No, I think that was good.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now for our next presentation, I would like to invite up Bill Croft and Sharon Eason from Acume Partners.
Just these averages. Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us here today. My name is Bill Croft, I'm a director with Acume Partners, and tonight we're going to do a presentation on our internal audit on government aids and grants. That audit was completed by Sharon Eason, and without further ado, let me pass the mic to Sharon.
Thank you, Bill. Good evening, everyone. As Bill mentioned, my name is Sharon Eason, I'm a manager with Acume Partners, and this evening I will walk you through the audit of the government aids and grants. The audit scope was from July 20th to May 21st, and the purpose of the audit was to evaluate and assess the adequacy of the procedures and the internal controls over the government aid and grants operations in the district. There were five objectives as follows. No, there's no objectives. The objectives were to ensure that funds are expended in accordance with the terms and approved budget of the grant, to ensure that the district is requesting reimbursement for all funds for which they are entitled, or that unused balances of grant funds are remitted to the proper granting authority. Third objective is to ensure that the required reports are accurate and submitted in a timely manner. Fourth object, objective is to ensure that adequate documentation is maintained in support of grant objectives, and finally, to ensure proper and efficient administration of the grant award. Our audit procedures, a summary of our audit procedures are as followed. We reviewed existing district policies and procedures, we reviewed the control environment, we interviewed the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources and Pupil Personnel Services to obtain a thorough understanding of the objectives, goals, and the desired operations of the grant awards, and to identify any concerns that the Assistant Superintendent of HR and Pupil Personnel Services may have regarding the ongoing operations of the program. We also examined the expenditure audit trail, selected a sample of disbursements, and verified that sufficient documentation supported each disbursement, and that the services performed support the grant goals and objectives. In addition, we verified that funds have only been expended for budgeted line items approved in the grant application. And finally, we obtained a copy of the Maintenance of Effort Calculator and verified that the calculation is accurate and that submission to the New York State Board of Education was timely. The audit ratings are in the, in the following three categories. It's either satisfactory, which means that the policies and regulatory requirements and findings indicate there's modest weakness that require management's attention. The third category is needs improvement, and that summarizes that these findings require management's prompt resolution to prevent further deterioration and possible losses. And, and third, it's unsatisfactory. Management's immediate attention to these findings is required to prevent loss. Of the five audit areas, of the four audit areas that we looked at, we granted the satisfactory rating to all with the first, the first area of policies and procedures over the grant, government aids and grant process with recommendations. A summary of those recommendations are as follows. Internal audit recommends cross-training or shattering of another staff member or members to enable multiple people to enable multiple people to gain an understanding of what is involved in the grant application and submission process. The second recommendation was that a needs assessment is conducted. However, a formal report analysis of program costs to outcomes and benefits achieved should be developed. In our discussion with management, they agreed with the recommendations, and their responses are as follows, and I quote: "The district will ensure cross-training is conducted with the CSE chairperson on completing the 611 and 619 grants. The Assistant Superintendent of HR and PPS will conduct this process during the last two weeks of June each year over a three-year period. During mid-year meetings with the district treasurer and the accountant, the Assistant Superintendent of HR and PPS will have the CSE chairperson attend each meeting so that they can be cross-trained over a three-year period. The district will ensure that the Director of Curriculum and Instruction is cross-trained beginning July 2021 on writing the Title I, II, and IV grants over a three-year period of time. The district will ensure that a template is created and can be used to conduct an analysis each year on the program it runs beginning July 21st." End of quote.
Next slide.
This concludes our presentation. At this time, I would like to say thank you to Jill and her staff for always accommodating us so very nicely when we come to do the audit and to respond to our requests very timely. And I would also like to thank the Audit Committee for their time in our presentation earlier today. Any questions?
So while we're thinking about questions, I do want to invite the Chairperson of our Audit Committee, Mr. Tom Sawyer, up if he wants to join the auditors.
Did you tell him in advance you were going to do that?
The look he gave me said no. So I guess my first question, and I'll let the auditors handle it. I just want to just reemphasize that in a world where we're so used to everything being highly effective, that satisfactory is the highest rating which you can provide. Thank you.
So after reviewing the report, it's the Audit Committee's recommendation that the board accept both the audit report as well as the recommendations and the responses.
Thank you. Any other questions from anybody on the board?
No, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And thank you for all the members of the community who are on our Audit Committee. That is also a volunteer position, and we appreciate the input. That means you, Mr. Sawyer. What's next? Oh, athletics. Our final presentation for this evening is an athletic update for this year, which is being set up.
Thank you. So I will be standing in right now for Mr. Burrow. Or not. Thank you, Dan. So now I will be standing in for Mr. Burrow this evening. Unfortunately, he cannot be here this evening, but as many are aware, he is beginning his transition to Minna Sink Valley, will serve as an Assistant Principal at the high school. And I do just want to take this opportunity to thank him for his many years of dedicated service to Putnam Valley, both as a teacher and as an administrator. So we continue to be extremely proud of our student athletes across all seasons. And rather than reading a list of all of the students and the accolades, we decided just to create some slides that represent all of the honors bestowed upon our students. So for boys soccer, we had all-league, all-section students, as well as the new All-Star team. For cross-country, all-league, and most important, those educators recognized as a New York State Scholar-Athlete Team. Field hockey, again, all-league and Scholar Team. Girls soccer, all-league members. In the winter season, boys' basketball, all-league. Girls' basketball, all-league, all-section. League champions, regional champions, and again, recognized as a Scholar-Athlete Team. Very impressive. Boys' swimming, several new records were set, and numerous students qualified for the States. Cheerleading, all-league and all-section honors. There were, again, the regional champions, which is typical for that team, and again, Scholar-Athletes. All leagues in wrestling. Scholar-Athlete Team for indoor track. Gymnastics, we had our student win Gymnast of the Year for the third consecutive year. Regional champions and an undefeated season. Swimming, our valedictorian, Aleah Steele. All-league girls volleyball. Football, all-league. Cheerleading, scholarship winner. Boys lacrosse, very impressive. We got a number of students, all-league and all-section. Low-hud Player of the Week and League Champions, Boys Lacrosse. Girls Lacrosse, all-league, all-league honorable mention. Ms. Lindsay Cohen, who was just here a few minutes ago, scored her 100th goal and another Scholar-Athlete Team. Outdoor track, for the third time, we had a student win the championship. Nia won the 100-meter dash, third in the 200. And Gabby broke the school record for the 1500-meter. Softball, all-league. Students receiving scholarships, our salutatorian, also a member of this team and another Scholar-Athlete Team. Baseball, all-league and all-section. Golf, all-league, all-section, Mr. Weller. That's it. Thank you.
Jeremy, their actual names roll up on the website or on the team. It's too bad we didn't also do music awards and science research awards, because you'll notice a lot of the same names. We have very, very well-rounded, busy students here at Putnam Valley. They're athletes. I think the best part of that presentation is how many of our teams are Scholar-Athletes, which I believe means the team has to have a 90 average overall.
I think that's right. That's what I was going to ask.
Yeah, and I believe it's a 90 average overall. Yeah. Yes, it's a 90 average overall.
I was going to ask Jess, if she knew the answer.
Yes, it is. I do know that.
She was going 90, yes.
So, which is commendable, because there's a lot of hours that go into a sport. There's a lot of hours that go into maintaining a 90 average. Many of them are musicians. A lot of hours goes into their instruments. So we're very, very proud of the students of Putnam Valley.
And that on top of our broken year. So all those awards.
For those who couldn't follow it that quickly, we actually had six Scholar-Athlete Teams. Girls' Basketball, Field Hockey, Cross Country, Girls Indoor Track, Girls Lacrosse, and Softball. And in total, we had 50 students who were all-league, and we had nine students that made all-section.
Wow, that's great. Let's clap one more time. Okay, redoing student portrait. Okay, for the last time in the 2021 school year, I would like to ask for a student report. Do you have one? That was a big buildup.
I guess we'll pretend that it's normal. Senior week, that was a lot of fun. We appreciate all the work that went into it in making the week that the seniors had memorable. If people don't know, there was like a car parade, and we decorated our cars.
A car parade in a deluge? A car parade in a deluge?
Is that a water thing?
Yeah, that's a water. It's like a lot of water falling down.
We decorated our cars. We got a breakfast. We thanked the parents for that. That was, I really appreciate that. I'm drawing blanks now.
I feel like we just spent like two weeks doing this. What do we do?
Color Wars.
Color Wars, yeah. That was... Thank you, Mr. Mahoney, for that. And the film team, that was, if you weren't able to watch it, there's a live stream. I believe, is the video still posted? Yeah, the video is still posted. It's really long, so you might want to skip through a couple of it. The Color Wars events were... And we know that people worked really hard to work within COVID guidelines to make that happen, so we appreciate that. What else? I really...
Oh, my God, come on. We've done things all week.
Senior Awards.
Senior Awards.
Senior Awards, yeah.
Was it Wednesday? Senior Brain totally.
Yeah, we, oh. On the graduation practice, I'm not allowed to discuss it too much, according to Mr. Scampoli, but Mr. Scampoli does the thing, and it was very nice. If there are current students listening, don't listen real quick. He basically does like this thing where...
He talks to us. He just talks to us. That's it.
He talks to us, and everybody starts crying. And, you know, it's, everybody's getting all emotional because it's the last time we're going to see everybody. And so, yeah, that was really nice.
He's going to yell at us tomorrow.
Yeah, we're going to yell. He's going to yell at us.
Until tomorrow.
We didn't tell him exactly what happened.
The prom?
The prom. We talked about it last time. We'll talk about it again. Prom was really fun. Yeah, I think it was a really great time, especially because, again, with COVID and everything, it was a little hard to work within the lines that we were given. And I think that Ms. Anderson and Mr. Elsasser and everybody else who helped did a great job. So, yeah, I think that's pretty much it. That's pretty much it for the student report. Graduation is tomorrow. It'll be livestreamed. The link will be on the website, so look into that if you would like to watch. In case anybody watching at home doesn't know, graduates are now allowed to bring four guests to graduation instead of two. So, yeah. And I think that's pretty much it.
Yeah, I think that's it.
Thank, yeah, now we're going to say our thank yous. We just want to say thank you to everybody who allowed us to come up here and speak and listen to us, which was really nice to be heard.
It's been a, it's been a fun year. Like, I've loved coming here. It was once a month in the beginning of the year, and then we started kind of coming to both. And it's an experience, and it's really not more than just like another tick off the resume. It's really just, we're speaking our minds, and we're giving our opinions, and you're listening, and it's great. And it's, I'm going to miss it next year. Especially Dr. Cohen's emails. I love them. I was at the doctor the first time I got it, and I just, I'm just like laughing hysterically at all the little funny things. And I was like, oh, this made my doctor's appointment so much better. I'm going to miss that. I'm going to miss coming up here and speaking my mind about school stuff and talking about what's happening, even in the beginning of the year when we were wearing masks, and I was a little nervous, and I was sitting in the pack. It's a great experience.
I just want to say thank you for the experience and opportunity, because it's, when I came in here, I was really nervous, but being able to see how these things are run is going to be really helpful in the future, so thank you.
And you set a high bar, so, but spread the word so that people want to do it.
I don't know how much I'm buying into this whole scared thing. Between the two of you, one was fierce on every athletic field, and the other one singing and dancing on the stage in front of 500 people.
It's going to make you look bad.
But we very much appreciate your time and effort and really being part of our team for the past year. And we know you'll continue to make Putnam Valley proud as you guys continue into college, so thank you both.
And I forgot, I forgot the very first, you just reminded me, the very first meeting. Only Jess was there because they were alternating. And she said, well, we really don't have a report yet because we hadn't started. But do you have any questions for me? What student just does that? So it was, it was awesome. And the bar is really high, and we're going to miss you both very, very much.
And you can come back and share how what you've done in Putnam Valley transferred to your college experience whenever you're home. You're welcome to come to board me.
Absolutely. We would love that. We'd love to hear from you.
We'll get you signed up, the sub for classes. We'll take care of you guys.
All right, Dr. Left, I know they're always a hard act to follow. Do the best you can.
Very true, very true.
Superintendent's report.
All right, so just a quick update on the Director of Physical Education, Athletics, and Health position. We've canvassed the resumes. We've done our initial screenings. And now a committee has met with three of the four individuals so far. So we're certainly nearing completion, and we're optimistic that we'll have, that I'll be recommending someone for the board to appoint during our meeting on July 1st. From the high school, under Mr. Zupan's mentoring, we had a fantastic showing at the PVHS Science Research Program at the Genius Olympiad. The Genius Olympiad is one of only two international research competitions held this year, and Putnam Valley High School had five winners. Olivia Goncalves, honorable mention. Katerina Duris, honorable mention. Jacob Nakame, second place. Ms. Aleah Steele, our valedictorian, second place. And Kayla Gona, first place. Ms. Steele was also received second place at the Science Congress, a New York State-level competition. In other news, the New York State Controller's Office is conducting an audit in our business office. And that will go on for several months. Right now, they're just doing a risk assessment. They're not here because of anything. This is just sort of our turn in the five-to-seven-year cycle. So they'll be here, and eventually we'll issue a report. Happier news, COVID update. No positive cases again this week, after only one case last week. Obviously, as everyone's heard, the New York State vaccination rate is past 70%. The good news is many restrictions have been lifted. The bad news is not in schools. But we're doing the best we can. No masks outdoors. Field day at the elementary school today. It was great to see the kids outside having fun, running around, with masks being optional. We're still holding out hope for fall, full return to school. Just quick end-of-year updates, past and present. High school academic awards for underclassmen, June 14th, 15th, and 16th. Senior awards on June 9th. For anyone who missed it, the middle school play, Mary Poppins. High school graduation scheduled for tomorrow, down on the turf, 7:00 p.m. Middle school had their moving up ceremony today. After getting some grief for not having it in person and outdoors, we could not have asked for better weather. It was beautiful out there today, and I'm glad it all worked out. Middle school barbecue at the town park, coming up June 22nd. Elementary school field day was today, something I still remember as a student in Putnam Valley Elementary School. Elementary school moving up ceremonies are scheduled for June 23rd for small group ceremonies. Now, I did want to say a few words about the topic why I believe everyone is here, because normally this room is empty, and it's a little creepy. Though, I do want to talk a little bit about Putnam Valley's work on equity, diversity, and inclusivity. The focus of our work remains on bringing students together, making sure that everyone feels a sense of belonging within our school community. Our work will in no way divide our students or make anyone, regardless of race, feel different from others. The learning that has already taken place within Putnam Valley has involved an engaged group of adults who are interested in learning more about this topic. This group reviewed many resources and worked with a consultant to guide their learning. However, the work of this group should be in no way construed as a development of curriculum, supportive of a particular resource or a commitment for a consultant. As this work continues in Putnam Valley, parents and students will be provided opportunities to inform our work focused on equity, diversity, and inclusivity. This work will be led by individuals who work and live in Putnam Valley in a way that makes sense for our community. Critical race theory is not an appropriate framework for our students. It has not, and it will not, be implemented within our schools. The cultural responsive sustaining framework provided by New York State is a guide for school districts. The cultural responsive sustaining framework provided by New York State is a guide for school districts. As a school community, we will collectively decide which aspects, if any, of the CRS framework that are right for our school and our community. It is meant to be a resource for schools and not a how-to guide to follow. The Putnam Valley School District currently has 170 active policies that serve as a guide for our work. These policies range from attendance and homework to how and when we display the flag. These policies are meant to hold the district accountable. They are preventative in nature and in no way should be construed or perceived to be an issue within our schools. The Board of Regents launched an initiative to advance diversity, equity, and inclusion in our schools across New York State. The Board expects all school districts will develop policies that advance diversity, equity, and inclusion. And that they implement such policies with fidelity and urgency. I just want to cover, that is the reason why we developed our plan. Um, for anyone who's reading the plan, we have a first reading and we will have a second reading coming up at a later meeting. The whole nature of our plan, the theme of our plan, and every aspect of our plan is about bringing students together, making sure that all students feel included, have a sense of belonging, and in no way will our plan or anything else we do in this district serve as a way to divide our students into groups. That's it. Thank you.
All right, and now, um, I would like to open it up to public comments on any agenda item. And that would include a superintendent report. Yes, just come up to the podium. Can I just, because I forget to say this all the time, introduce yourself when you come up, with your name, and then... Go ahead. Just introduce yourself first, if you don't mind.
Good evening. First of all, I'm very happy that I'm here in Putnam Valley rather than Carmel.
Could you introduce yourself, please?
I will.
Okay. He's getting there. He's getting there.
My name is Archbishop Anthony Bondi. By way of disclosure, I am the Chair of the Putnam Valley Ethics Board. And for the majority of my life, I've been an educator in one form or another. However, I speak to you today as a private taxpaying citizen. I was very troubled by the report of Ms. Jeanette Mistrata, your Director of Curriculum and Instruction at last month's meeting. The composition of her committee as she stated it was teachers, teachers who are parents, and eventually other parents outside this community. Well, I wonder what she meant by outside this community. Is it the school community? Because what troubles me is that nowhere does she invite or encourage members of the Putnam Valley community to be a part of this committee from its inception. Instead, it appears that the members are selected, the agenda's set, and then only the window dressing of parents who do not happen to be teachers are then invited in. This is dishonoring, disempowering, and undermines the very purpose of that committee. It also appears to confirm the word on the street that I often hear that the school board is incestuous, controlling, and manipulative. I am hoping that this is not true. However, the evidence of the public statement ba, made at your last meeting by Ms. Mistrata appears to confirm this. Your mission statement starts out by saying that Putnam Valley Central School District in partnership with our families and community. Well, I'm here to tell you that you have failed when it comes to our community if you mean by community, the town of Putnam Valley. The perception is that you have a closed group who really do not want to hear from the community, aside from everyone paying their school taxes on time. When people want to run for the school board who want to represent some of the concerns of the townspeople, they seem to be escorted into a committee or told that they didn't meet the deadline. Because the deadline is more important than getting a free and fair school board election. That is shameful and does not, uh, and is not the mark of a free and open organization. I hope having these things brought to your attention, you can and will do better. And I truly hope my words do not fall on deaf ears. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Howard London. I live at, uh, 12 Holly Street in Putnam Valley. I am the, uh, very proud father of a beautiful, soon-to-be seven-year-old, why is this moving? Second grader. Um, I apologize for my appearance, uh, and more importantly, for the fact that I'm going to read what I wrote because I was stuck in traffic for three hours coming home from Brooklyn and I don't pick up my phone when I drive to practice my speech. So, I will be looking down for most of the time and I apologize for that. First, let me say, which was not part of my speech, I appreciate, Dr. Luft, what you said. That certainly made me, uh, a little more hopeful and as I will try to explain and as I hope it becomes clear in my speech, um, this is for clarification purposes. This is not meant to be an attack in any way. So, as I wrote, "To Dr. Luft and the members of the board, I am here tonight to discuss my personal concerns, concerns that I know I share with many of the parents in this district regarding the upcoming curriculum as it relates to equity, inclusion, and diversity." Now, before you get the wrong idea or get nervous, I want to say the following. I want to clarify, as I wrote here. Both inclusion and diversity are noble qualities to strive for and should be attained. So, on their own, individually or coupled together, I don't believe many people have a problem with inclusivity, inclusion, and diversity. But, when you couple them with equity, which is wholly different than equality, we have a problem. This is very small text. I apologize. The fact remains that proponents of critical race theory and anti-racism, they use these three things together on purpose and usually as a code. And wherever equity, inclusion, and diversity has been implemented, for example, in Loudoun County, Virginia, or in other parts of the country, CRT and anti-racism always follows. I think now would be a good idea to define both racism and anti-racism so that we all know what we're talking about and that everybody here knows the perspective of myself and many of the parents who feel the way I feel. Racism is the belief that one race is superior to all other races. Or, in other words, that all races are inferior to one specific race, whatever that race may be. That is racism. Sir, with all due respect, racism is the belief that one race, whatever the race may be, is superior to all other races. White supremacy is an, is a form of racism. But it is not the definition of white supremacy. White supremacy has its own definition. Thank you.
All right. I, I just, I feel the need to do this. And I, I apologize for cutting you off. You do have the mic. But I'm gonna ask that just everyone be respectful. Anybody who wants to come up and speak is more than welcome to do so. But it's, I don't want this to turn into a tit-for-tat back and forth because nothing will be accomplished. So, I encourage anyone who has something to say to come up and, and to, to use the mic, but I do ask that you be respectful of whoever's up here. Thank you.
Now would be a perfect time, as I wrote, and now I actually believe, to explain on my behalf, on my wife's behalf, and on behalf of a lot of the parents that I've gotten to know in this district, some who are here tonight, that racism in all of its forms, white supremacy and others, is without equivocation morally repugnant and disgusting. Racism is disgusting. None of us, none of the people here support racism, believe that there is any benefit to the society whole with racism, or that there's any benefit in general with the ideology of racism. And you can use whichever form of racism you want. Now, anti-racism is an equally morally repugnant and untruthful ideology. It says, it promotes the idea that the institutions of society are rife and based on white supremacy, which is wholly untrue and disgusting. Now, I could cite President Abraham Lincoln, but I'd rather reference Frederick Douglass and Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., who said many times, often during their times, that the Declaration of Independence and the Constitution were promissory notes that needed to be fulfilled so that every American of every race would be treated fairly and equally before the law so that they could reach their full potential. That's what our system of justice, that's what our founding documents, that's what they believe in, that's what they promote. I don't think there's a person in this room or in this county that would say that America has been perfect since the, since its founding. We clearly have had many low points in our history. But, the fact remains is that as a society and as a people, because of the mechanisms in the Declaration of Independence and in the Constitution, we were able to move forward and make necessary changes, needed changes to society that made life more inclusive for, for people of other races, for people of other backgrounds and ethnicities. I don't think you will find anybody in this room who says that there are no racist people. Racist people as individuals exist. But anti-racism says that society writ large is racist and needs to be torn out by the root and branch because it is steeped in white supremacy. It is built on white supremacy. And that is not true. I will try to speed this up a little bit. I want to pivot to a question and this is a question that Dr. Luft, uh, actually addressed before he knew what my question was going to be.
I won't tell you when he gave me the heads up.
You had a recent, uh, email exchange with a parent in this district and you said pretty much what you said tonight, that critical race theory will not be in the curriculum. However, we have a 20-plus member board or 20-plus member panel, group, that is called the Anti-Racism Group or Panel or Board, whatever. I'm not exactly, I don't remember what it is. Forgive me, please. And I remember watching two nights ago with my wife, the June 3rd Board of Ed meeting, where one of the board members suggested changing that name because of the connotations that it gives and the unpopular view that in this district, we, I believe it has, which does not instill a lot of confidence that there is a whole lot of transparency going on. And we also know that this anti-racism board, or panel, or group, or whatever, is having some level of training in CRT. So, the question is as follows. You made your statement before and you had your email exchange with, with that parent. How can you guarantee the parents of this district that critical race theory and anti-racism will not officially or unofficially be put into the curriculum? And, and I want to couple that question with this. What world, in what world do you believe that having members of a panel who are all teachers, administrators, et cetera, not parents who are not teachers yet, I know there's a phase two idea or plan, you know, that there, that may be open to us and certainly I hope that is sooner rather than later. But if the teachers and administrators who are gonna have direct contact with our children are being taught critical race theory, it's human nature that that is then going to trickle down to the students, either officially or unofficially. So, you know, the words of President Reagan, "Trust but verify," you know? I'd like to trust you. I really would. Your job is to educate. Our job is to trust that you're doing a good job for our children. That we are supposed to instill in our children respect for you guys, respect for the teachers who take on a lot of responsibility and have put themselves in, in a position, not a position, but, but in a, in a, in a profession that I didn't choose to go into. I had teachers growing up that made a tremendous impact on my life. There are good teachers. There are bad teachers. There's everyone in between. I respect the profession. I trust that the teachers of this district have the best intentions for the students and for my daughter. But there is a disconnect, there is a divide, when you, sir, say one thing and you have a panel that's being taught to some degree, critical race theory and anti-racism, and then we're just supposed to believe that that's not gonna trickle down to the students. I don't know how you square that round hole. And I'm hoping that you can explain to me how that is because I, I just don't see it.
Mind if I do it now?
Please, by all means.
Can I ask you a question?
Anything you want.
So, you, you seem, you know a lot about the topic, right?
Sure.
You've educated yourself, reviewed resources, books, pamphlets, websites.
Yes.
Whatever it may be, right?
Yeah.
And you used all of that information to form an opinion, decide where you stand, what's best for yourself and your children.
Yes, my child, yes.
Okay. So, I want you to think of that committee as exactly the same. We had a group of educators. There's lots of talk about equity, diversity, inclusivity. A lot of teachers don't feel capable of having those conversations amongst themselves, with students, with administrators. So, what they did, we had a 22 people who were engaged themselves in this topic and they wanted to learn more about it, just like you did. They reviewed a ton of resources. They, they certainly did not set out to study critical race theory. They read books that they hated, right? They read books that we've talked about here that they said, "We'll never use this in school." But unless they review the resources, they do their due diligence, they research similar to what you did to form an opinion, then we don't know how to move forward, right? So, I want you to think of this group of educators, right? There's purposely no students on there because we weren't ready to share this with students. We had to get a sense of what was out there, what was right for our community, what was right for our students. And now that we've finished our first year of self-learning, of our own research, of our own discovery, to decide what is gonna work and what is not gonna work, that is what is the imp- that is what is the impetus for the next step of this work, which is to involve the community, to involve our students, to pick and choose the resources that that committee reviewed that are right for our students, that are right for our community, and to ignore the other stuff. We learned more about what we will not use than we did about what we will use moving forward. And that is the purpose of that committee. It was purposely internal. It purposely did not involve students or parents. It was about educators educating themselves on a topic that we know is going to be divisive. We know it's going to be heated. We know it's going to be controversial. So why would we not empower ourselves with all the information we could before deciding how to best move forward? So just like you educated yourself to be able to come up and share your beliefs, that's exactly what that group of educators did for the past year. They weren't turnkeying anything they were talking about to their classrooms. They weren't designing curriculum. They weren't training other teachers. It was a group of educators who got together to learn all they could learn because if you don't figure out what's not going to work, then you don't know what's going to work moving forward. So I don't want you, so that's my assurance to you is that group of educators has noble intentions. They learned lots of things that they're not going to work in Punta Valley, and they have no interest in enrolling out here. And they have a sense of what's right for our community and what's going to work. The name is changing, all right? We have Equity Diversity Inclusivity Committee. We have, that's our policy. That's where we're going, right? So I don't want you to think the anti-racism label, I wasn't a huge fan with to begin with, it's going away because I don't think that's appropriate to have. That's an appropriate name for a group with students and parents that are involved in it. So obviously, you don't know me more than sitting in this seat, so my word probably doesn't mean that much to you. But I want everyone to understand what the context was behind that committee, what the purpose was behind that committee, and what that work will look like moving forward with our students and our teachers and our community.
I would like to respond by saying that I respect that very much, and I appreciate that. We, I have said that it is our responsibility, if we want this relationship to work, for the parents of the district to trust the teachers and the administrators. What you are saying certainly gives me hope. We don't know what the end result is yet, but I certainly feel much better than I did when I first came in here. That's just me. I'm not speaking for anybody and/or everybody. And everybody, or everybody. I would ask this question as a follow-up, if I may. Being that the panel, the 22 members, have self-taught, have looked to see what doesn't work so they will be better equipped to know what could work, okay? Because equity is different than equality, and it is very closely tied to anti-racism and critical race theory, I do have a part of me that is somewhat skeptical, but I certainly appreciate what you said. Therefore, would it be possible for the 22-member committee to put out a statement or a paper or something, a report, okay? A simple report saying, these are the, these are the, these are the things that we used, that we looked at. These are the, this is the information that we studied. And we have decided as a panel, as a group, whatever, that these specific periodicals, means of information, whatever they are, are not conducive to the learning or for the learning of the students of this district. As opposed to us guessing and wondering about what they read and studied and therefore liked or didn't, and we still have this worry, for the sake of transparency, for the sake of fostering that trust that we want to bestow onto you because you can't do your jobs effectively if the parents don't trust you, could we have that as kind of an olive branch and say, okay, here are 15 items that we looked at. These 12 are completely outside the bounds. These three kind of hit the mark, and here's why. So that although we're not trying to second, although we're not trying to be in an overseer position, we can have a sense of where this is going in terms of how it's going along. And again, I will not speak for everybody and/or anybody. I have my feelings based on the definitions of specific things, of what the intentions of certain things are. If I was to get a report, and this is, again, just me, if I was to get a report saying, for two months, we got together, we looked at these materials, we trained ourselves to understand what it was really all about, and these items are just, this is crazy. This is not conducive for the learning and the betterment of the children of this district. We are here to educate, and we are here to foster and nurture their natural talents. These pieces of information that we studied do not do that. And they will not be in the curriculum, and they will not be required reading or suggested reading or anything of the such. These couple of items that we did, you know, we think there's merit to them, and here's why. I wonder if that's something the board, the panel, whatever it is, would be willing to do so that we can have a better relationship and a more trusting relationship because if we don't trust you guys and if we're constantly worried about this and other topics, what have you, but my focus specifically on this, it's going to be very difficult for my daughter to have a good educational experience and thrive and have her talents developed. And I'm maybe sounding a little selfish, but I don't want to speak for other people, okay? I, you know, I want to speak from where I'm coming from and from where my wife is coming from. So that would, for me personally, it wouldn't be the end-all, be-all. Obviously, we'll see how the curriculum comes out, and there's a Phase 2, and we're supposed to be involved in that Phase 2, as I understand it. That would certainly go a long way. Is, again, I'm rambling, so I apologize. I've asked the question seven times already in basically not too different a way.
I've just been waiting for you to stop, so I can answer.
Yeah. Yeah, my wife just texted, my wife just texted me to stop. Literally just texted me to stop. Let the guy answer.
I was going to say, it's because you put your phone down.
I haven't, she's, yeah.
All right, so.
Hi, to your wife, by the way.
I don't want to interrupt you, so don't.
No, 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 by all means.
All right, so to answer your question, I think I could take it a step further.
Okay.
The members of that committee are not empowered to make curricular decisions. That's my job and the job of the Board of Education with consultation with my Director of Curriculum Instruction and the 22 highly qualified, passionate, compassionate people that are on that committee that want nothing more than for your daughter and everyone else's child in this room to be successful here. So I could promise you that. That committee is not empowered to make curricular decisions, right? In fact, when those decisions are made and we will have information ready to share, they will involve input from parents and students because that's the goal. That's where we're going. We're not opening school in September and this committee is going to say, here are the required resources for everyone to read. That's not happening, all right? This work will continue throughout next school year. It'll involve parent input. It'll involve students. We are committed to this work. I think this work is important, but it has to be done in a meaningful, purposeful way. There is no rush to get to an end that's not going to benefit anyone. So I have no problem of sharing resources when they're ready to be shared, but I can't identify those resources until we engage the constituents to be part of this conversation. So when the timing is right, I would be happy to share that information. But I don't want anyone to think that we're secretly sneaking resources in over the summer and that all of a sudden everything's going to look different in the fall because that's not going to be the case. And as we saw before, we could obviously disagree about definitions. So we talked a little bit about definitions of racism, but I did quickly look up the definition of equity because I feel as if we have different definitions because this is the equity I'm referring to. The quality of being fair and impartial or providing everyone what they need to proceed. That's the equity I'm talking about.
I appreciate that. And in response to that, I would define equality as the equality of, don't use the word in the definition, but you know, it's going to happen.
It simply means treating everyone, everyone to be treated exactly the same way.
The quality of opportunity, so, right. A quality of opportunity so that the students who deserve to have every opportunity given to them to make, to allow them to succeed using their own innate talents and with the help, supplemental help of educators.
You know, raise your hand, you just stand by it.
Yeah, so I, okay. I will say this, okay? I will respond by saying this. Your definition of equity, I don't have a problem with. But if we're looking at current events and if we're looking about recent historical trends as it relates to how CRT and anti-racism has been implemented into school districts all over the country, they are done so through equity, inclusion, and diversity. And that's certainly why I have been very, very concerned. I appreciate what you've said. I appreciate the opportunity to have this conversation with you. And, you know, we'll see how things go. I certainly feel better than I did before I came in. You know, hopefully it will continue to go in a good, in a good direction.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Hi, my name is Melissa Ossie. I didn't come with a speech prepared, but I moved to speak. I'm the mother of a 10th grader, and she's been part of the school district the entire time that she's been in school. I want to congratulate the school and thank the educators for taking the very initial, beginning, tiny step to set this committee up. And I want to offer my time as a leader of a nonprofit organization who is steeped in the work of serving communities and a social worker to become part of this work in the next year as you invite parents. I want you to know that there are many, many parents who disagree with the views that were just shared and don't think that this is even far enough. So I just want you to know that there are multiple perspectives in this community and that many of our children are hungering for actual thoughtful understanding of the history of this country, the structures of this country, and how they can participate, including becoming anti-racist. And so I just want you to know that there are many perspectives in this community different from those that were just shared.
Thank you.
Hi. Hold on. I'm Nicole Poshia. My son is in the elementary school. I live on Oswin Lake Road. I had a whole speech written, but Howard kind of took it all out of my mouth.
He stole your thunder?
Yeah, he stole my thunder. So I'm just going to read part of it, and then I do have some questions. And Dr. Luft, I appreciate everything you did already say. You put a lot of our minds at ease. This isn't, in my opinion, a racism thing or a racist or these people are racist, these people are not. It's more about the children right now that I'm concerned about, honestly. So I'm going to just start my speech. I'll read it, and I'll stop when I think that Howard already touched on something, if that's okay. I've been a part of this community since the day I was born, almost 41 years ago, and I am proud to say that. I come here tonight as a mom to a sweet and loving nine-year-old little boy in the Punta Valley District. I come here as a mother and a parent for all the children who parents, for all the children whose parents do not have a voice right now in fear of backlash. I don't come here tonight to go viral or to be featured on every news outlet because we've been seeing that going around a lot lately. I came here not to create any more division within our community but to be heard and understood by everybody. I'm going to give you a little glimpse of my son. Giovanni is nine, and he's an amazing, amazing and intuitive little boy. His father and I have raised him to not see color, to not judge anyone on their appearance, and to always be kind even to the ones that aren't kind back as that means they're fighting a struggle we don't know about. I have taught my son to always remember his worth and not because of the color of his skin, just because of the integrity of his character. So I think our concerns here and Howard's concern and the whole CRT, and you have to understand that we're also, there's so many different sides to this CRT. And, you know, you focus in on the side that you want to listen to, in a way, right? So where, you know, if you, I'm sorry. Let me just, okay. So my point is that I feel, along with other people feel, that if CRT comes into the district, which Dr. Luft, you also said, it's not going to happen, where kids don't see color. Like I said, my nine-year-old son, he doesn't see color. He sees you for who you are. I feel like it will create more division in the town with the adults and the town with the kids, and you're already seeing the friction with everything. You know, sorry, guys. Also, Howard, I'm sorry. You just took a lot of my speech, so I'm trying. This is your fault.
It's okay.
I also had written, "We cannot deny the history of our country, nor should we. It has given us a life we all choose to live. We have grown and reformed segregation to inclusion. History should be embraced and learned from. The critical race theory or the culturally responsive sustaining education format elicits a shame response in our children as children learn what they live. Countless studies have proven that shame and guilt directly correlates to trauma. It is our right to protect our children, and it is an injustice if we all sit back and let this format move forward without being together." I recall a great civil rights leader that made a speech teaching this world that no one should ever be judged by the color of their skin but rather by the content of their character. Millions of people fighting for civil rights praised that speech and that leader. And now we are being told that Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was wrong as now everyone, including our children, should be judged by the color of our skin. That's all I really wanted to say because Howard got it all. But, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, my name is Brian Bergen. I'm also a parent of a child in the district. Doesn't matter how long we've lived here. Doesn't matter how long our kids have been in the district. They're all just important, right? I support the work that you're doing. I hope that you go as far as you can to create a better educational system that more accurately represents what this country is and how it became the way it is. And I hope that you're not bullied by the paranoid fantasies that are on show here. It's scary, and there's acts, I mean, I'm not sure what this axe grinder about transparency. I couldn't follow it.
You're talking to us, not to them.
I apologize, and I will end my comments there. But I do think that this is a crowd that's here to bully you, and I hope that you are not bullied because we support the work, the important work that you're doing.
Thank you.
Any other public contribution?
Sorry, we can come back to her for Jess.
After new business.
You want to come up and perform a number or something?
Do we have to report that in the minutes that Jess went to the bathroom? We'll edit the graduation video.
I'm not much of a performer myself, but.
You're not really going to sing, are you?
He's thinking about it.
Yeah. So I was just talking briefly with Jess about some things to say. And I feel like one thing, or two things that I need to stress is that the school teaches respect. I feel like everybody should teach respect. I feel like no matter what, you should respect someone. That's a good one. And then the other thing is, in my four years here,
And then I, and then the other thing is, in my four years here, uh, the thing that's been like nailed in is reliable sources. Like I've, Mr. Man in the library, every English teacher and history teacher I've had, Mr. Zupan, um, through science research, reliable sources have, has been like the, the cornerstone of everything that I've been taught. I guess, yeah, we'll say cornerstone. Um, and it's, it's important because you, you can't formulate a correct, um, opinion, I guess that's the right way to say it, without a reliable source. So I feel like reliable, that the school teaches the ability to find a reliable source and learn from it through these websites for getting resources that I don't remember the names of. I'm sorry, Mr. Deman. Um, and it, it, it's just been stressed. It's been stressed from day one that reliable sources are the way to go in this school. So, respect and reliable resources. Woo. I told you, I'm not a big entertainer.
That was good. Thanks, Parker.
Of course.
I'll tell Jess you do. You made her proud.
We can, um, begin our new business, uh, after the new business section, there's always another public contribution period. Our new business is not that long. Um, the second, oh, here comes Jess running in right now. The, and just for procedural, the second public contribution is on any topic. It does not have to have been on the agenda. That's why we separate it out.
Sorry.
It's quite all right.
Okay.
It's no reason, you don't have to announce it.
Everybody already knows it, so we're. Um, I'm drawing a blank now. I literally just prepped myself in the bathroom. Um, um, Parker, what were we talking about?
I talked about resources and respect. You got the resume.
I don't have the resume.
Cliff, now come on.
Wait, there is another public comment. You want, you want to compose yourself? It will be, the new business will take about four minutes, so that's, so start the clock.
Aren't they just too cute?
Too cute.
Okay. All right, we are moving on right now to new business and can I ask you to start us off with Ms., with number one, Mr. Ferraro.
Resolved to grant permission for a non-resident faculty member child who attended district schools in 2020-2021 school year to attend Punta Vallarta High School, one child, for the 2021-2022 school year, without the payment of tuition as per the request in document number 19921 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting on file in the district office.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number two.
Resolved on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to accept the resignation of Teresa Vasquez, a lunch monitor from the district effective the end of 2020-21 school year as per document number 200-21 attached to the agenda and official minutes of the meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number three.
Resolved on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to accept the resignation of Kathleen Keough, a lunch monitor from the district effective June 25th, 2021, as per document number 201/21 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number four.
Resolved on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to accept the resignation of Amanda Ottega, a school monitor from the district effective May 21st, 2021, as per document 201 slash ace slash 21 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number five.
Resolved to authorize the Superintendent of Schools enter into agreements effective July 2021 with the following staff members. Agreements referenced in the official minutes of this meeting. Maureen Bellino, Susie Cummings, Natalie Doherty, Jill Figarella, Douglas Green, Michael Lee, Jacqueline Levine, Megan Smith-Hyson, David Spittle, Agadas Miske.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number six.
Resolved on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to accept the Acumen Partners Government Aid and Grants Internal Audit Report as per document number 216-21 attached to the agenda and official minutes of the meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda item number one.
Wait a minute. Resolve to.
Resolved to approve agenda items two through 11 as contained on the consent agenda for this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? For the last time, Mr. Collins.
Okay. We're approving CSE CPSE placements. We're approving a change order for the capital project, which is a credit from the electric company. We're approving an agreement with, uh, people who supply pupil personnel services. And there's about six country, companies that we're approving agreements with. I won't read them all to you. We're accepting a general donation of $250 for the Scott Pelletly Scholarship from 14 community members. We're approving unpaid leave for three employees. They're all partial days. We're approving additional work, um, for some employees who are going to be writing IEPs during the summer, who are district psychologists who'll be working with students. We're approving a cooperative transportation agreement with our neighborhood districts, Crotton, Harmon, Garrison, Henry Hudson, Lakeland, Austin, Pete's, Colomans and Yorktown when it's appropriate. Thus, when we're sending students to certain of the specialty schools and they are, we'll share transportation. We're approving a co, a cooperative education agreement with Southwest Bosse's for the school year and they help us do purchases as a group. So if we're buying laptops and another district is, they'll place the order as one so we get a better price because we're buying more. So we do that with Southwest Bosse's. We're approving 10 employees who are going to be doing summer maintenance work. And we're finally, we're amending the motion for staff approved extending school years. So we're adding some minor changes to the motion that we made last month.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And now, hold on, moving my screen down. Now, um, I would like, actually no, we're talking upcoming meetings and topics.
Yep, so our next meeting is scheduled for July 1st. It's a reorganization meeting and it'll also be our board retreat.
Okay. Not at the same time. The board retreat is before and then there's a reorganization meeting.
Yeah, so we should like disclose, retreat sounds like a fancy word. We'll really just be in the high school library.
Sitting around a table, talking.
We should get that out there in the public. We should change that.
There, there will be iced tea and coffee served.
True.
Okay, and, um, now I'd like to open it up for public comment on any agenda item or not. Any topic.
Anyone time that? I said four minutes. I think I was pretty close.
Yeah, it was close.
Hi, sorry. Sorry about that. Um, so basically, um, I kind of had a quick talk with Parker, um, beforehand, when before I forgot. Um, I just wanted to, uh, kind of reiterate from a student's perspective. I'm going to try to keep my opinion out of this because I am representing the entire student body, which is a lot of work and a lot of pressure. Um, basically, um, race discussions in class do happen, but I just want to, and a lot of parents, I feel like students at home will agree where we have these discussions, but people don't really know how to talk about it or it's tiptoed around and we don't really know how to like appropriately discuss these things respectfully. And my understanding is this committee's job is to figuring out how to have those discussions respectfully. And, you know, a lot of, myself included, have the privilege of having to discuss this and not experience this. So, um, just, yeah, like from the students, it's a little weird. You don't really know how to go about it and I think that that's what this committee is trying to figure out how to do appropriately.
Thank you.
Any other comment on any topic? Any, um, discussion on any topic by the board members? I just want to thank everyone who came tonight and involved communities of better school. So, thank you very much. And I'm looking at my board members.
I just want to thank Guy once more. I think I've probably served the fewest years with you and I wish it was more, but we all need to take steps sometimes and it's been a definite pleasure. So thank you, Guy.
And he'll be in one of those chairs.
Yes, true.
Okay, at this time, I would like.
Want me to read it?
Hmm?
You got it?
Yeah.
Okay.
At this time, I'd like to resolve to convene an executive session for one manner of the employment history of one particular person's, after which time no further business will be conducted.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Happy graduation to all of our seniors tomorrow night and congratulations on moving up to our middle school and fourth graders.
Have a good summer.
Have a great summer.
You're welcome.